Okay.
That's all right. I was just grabbing my cell phones to make sure.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call this meeting of the work group to order. We'll all take kind of a minute to take a deep breath and let go of the day and get ready for the task at hand. And then let's all stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve the agenda, please?
I need to do a --
On roll call, sorry about that.
It's all right. Commissioner Bryson.
Here.
Commissioner Ross.
Here.
Commissioner Kreidler is absent. Planning Commissioner Heath is absent. Community and economic development representative Moran.
Yep.
City manager Tatman.
Here.
Okay, now can I get a motion? Take a deep breath.
Yeah, it's all right. Been a long day. I'm making a motion we approve the agenda.
Okay.
Second?
Bryant, second. Have you got any discussions or?
No.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All three of us, right? Okay.
Motion if I could to excuse Commissioners Kreidler and Heath.
Support.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, before we get started, I just want to make a couple of quick remarks. First of all, thank you for being here tonight. Those of you that were here last time, thank you for coming back. Let me apologize, first of all, last week, I overinflated the utility expenditures for 300 Broadway and 303 Water Street. I took the very able figures that Michelle gave me that were annual and thought they were monthly and multiplied them by 12. So, I can only claim low blood sugar and promise that from now on, I will eat something before each meeting and let one of these guys check my math. That's all I can do in this case. As we did last week, we are not going to limit your comments to five minutes. However, again, if your plan was to read a manifesto, let's not do that at this particular meeting. If the comment has already been made and is sort of on record, just to save time to give everybody a chance to speak and to have us an opportunity to do our work, let's not go through it again. I'd also like to start again with comments just on 300 Broadway. So if we could do that, who would like to be first? Judy?
My name is Judy White. I'm the president of Friends of City Hall. I will just reiterate a few points that I made three weeks ago. The purchase offer, a copy of the purchase offer is in the handout that you just received so that you can look at it and you can go over it in detail tonight or, you know, at your leisure. I am willing to answer any questions. My business card is attached to that. You are welcome to send me emails to ask questions or to call me up at home and I will talk with you, you know, at length and answer all your questions. I think the principal thing that I need to say to the people who are here tonight for the first time is, the motivation on the part of Friends of City Hall to buy the building is purely altruistic. We're not trying to make money off the deal. We're not trying to aggrandize ourselves. Nobody in Friends of City Hall has ever made one single cent off that building. It has all been volunteer work and our membership has chronically and historically given, not received, and given in very high sums in some instances. We are motivated to make this offer for technical reasons. As owners of the building, we would become eligible for a large number of federal grants that we could apply for that are designed for restoration and construction. And I think as owners of the building, we would have significantly increased credibility with granting foundations and large donors and corporations that also give. I think as renters, there is always a question, I think, in the back of people's mind as to how long is this lease and what happens when the lease is done and where does, you know, what becomes of the building and that sort of thing. So it isn't conducive to giving. We have been, you know, recommended to make this move and decided to go forth with it. So that's the long and the short of it.
Hi Judy, looking at some figures that I'm assuming you put together for 300 Broadway, or maybe it was Holly. The city currently spends about $8,000 a year on building repairs on the land for maintenance.
Okay, we budget $7,000 a year for repairs.
Okay.
Does it mean we --
You don't spend it.
Hmm.
Thank you for clarifying.
It's a good clarification.
Okay.
The buildings and grounds include the Gai's Center, this building, and 300 Broadway.
All out of that same budget?
All out of the same budget.
Okay. I'll amend that question then. Obviously, the city, the building and grounds require annual maintenance, which will be several thousand dollars. At this point, absent any grants and whatever that you have, do you have the funding to maintain those grounds?
The bills that we would be responsible for in the future would not include upkeep of the grounds. It would be utilities and we're paying them anyway at this point.
Okay.
Gas, the water, the electricity.
I don't remember that in the contract. The city is assuming the responsibility for the grounds under that contract? Is that right?
That would have to be a negotiated point in it if it's, if we're going to talk about basically almost like a land split type of concept where it would be the building only and the park remains with the city, that would just have to be clarified in any contract going forward, whose responsibility was what and who owned what.
My assumption is that that's the way it's going to develop, that, you know, you'll come up with an easement, that you will not be selling us the property. If it ends up that the property is part of the sale and that's an additional bill we'll have to deal with in terms of, you know, upkeep of the grounds, personally, I would be happy with that and I would also buy the buy, suggest that several clauses be added to this purchase offer regarding the future of that property and to make it non-salable to outsiders, so that there is a wall around that. So as owners of that property, we can't abuse that, you know, sell off some portion of it, for instance. I got away from your initial question, but I think you answered it, so. Okay.
You guys have questions for Judy?
I don't yet, but I'm sure some will pop up.
Something will pop up.
As we go on.
Okay. Would anybody else?
I have a quick question. Oh, go ahead. I have a question for Judy though.
Go ahead.
How long, was it 10 years on that lease again?
Yes.
It was 10, okay.
Yep.
Wanted to verify. Thank you.
Yes.
Wait, 10 years on the lease and 10 years for the purchase contract as well, correct?
Correct, yes.
It's being leased right now, yeah.
And that's negotiable. In terms of the purchase contract, we're flexible on all the key elements of that. Nothing's carved in stone. If you wanted that to be 12 years or nine years or, you know.
But just Phil, for absolute clarity, right, the purchase terms were for 10 years?
Yeah.
That I had last seen. Purchase terms, not leasing, just so we don't confuse the two.
Yes. Go ahead.
Do I do it from here or up there?
Oh, was it a question for Judy?
Oh, no.
Apologies. You wanted --
Okay. Oh, okay.
I'm heartily disappointed.
Heather, hang on just a second. Got another question for Judy.
I have a question.
Go ahead Cheryl.
So, your group has had, you know, quote unquote, ownership of the building for the last, how many years? Four? I thought it was 15, 15.
No, no.
No. So it was 2017?
2017.
2017.
Yeah.
And since 2017, have you written any clients? You have.
Yes.
How many do you remember?
I personally wrote for several and we landed two. One from Michigan Council of Yarx and the other from the St. Clair County Community Foundation.
And what was the total number in those grants?
What was the?
Hat, the value of the grants.
Uh, $36,000 for the first one and $10,000 for the second one.
So $46,000 altogether. Okay.
Now, I should say that in the midst of that, there was also an anonymous grant for $50,000, which I cannot speak about in detail because it is anonymous.
And in the contract that you have that you presented to the city, what are your plans to, what are your plans for that timeframe? What do you want to accomplish on that timeframe?
For the timeframe of the sale of the property. I think thing one would be contracting with a professional grant writer. And we have two that we know of that we'd like to work with right now. And then to go after as many federal grants and other foundation money as we possibly can, as many as they can crank out. And as that money comes in, we would build two things. One would be the elevator. The second would be the ATA compliant men's and women's bathrooms. With those two things finished, we would immediately open for business and our business plan calls for the establishment of a rental venue for weddings, parties, and celebrations. The second thing is to use the upstairs as a performance center. And so we would, even though the interior decoration would not be finished, we'd start anyway. And our model for that early start is Orchestra Hall in Detroit. As they were restoring the building, they did the necessary in terms of lighting, bathrooms, and the stage floor, which had to be rebuilt. That was it and they opened the doors and it was, you know, packed houses from then on. Even though the seats were old and crappy and there was broken plaster all over, people didn't care. It was, the sound effects were wonderful and they are wonderful in the Opera House at City Hall. And we think that, you know, people will be excited having their downstairs.
Do you have a timeline? Do you have a timeline? Like you want to get this, you want to actually open for business on what year?
Everything depends on those two constructions. If we can do those fast, we'll open fast.
Do you think that it would be good to put a clause in there about that?
Do I think it would be?
A clause or something in there for that? Like if it wasn't done by such a person?
The wrong numbers for the elevators, $126,000. The bathrooms, $50,000. Those are wrong numbers and those are last year's numbers, so you might want to boost that a little bit for this year. So $225,000 was, I took the good telling people would be, you know, get us rolling.
She'd asked about a timing clause.
Right.
I'm sorry.
Timing clause for those items to be completed. That's what Cheryl had asked about.
Oh, a timing clause.
Timing clause, correct.
There is a timing clause in the contract and I think, I mean, that would make me really nervous. And I don't know that it, I don't know that it really would help anything, have a clause like that. I mean, if you're thinking that it would somehow spur us to activate, we're tired, you know, move forward with this. We're very eager. We would not drag our feet. That money comes in, baby, we'll spend it. We're spending it right now, starting Monday and ending, I think today, and I haven't checked, I don't know for sure, they were in there installing the fire alarm system. That was $11,600. And we get the money, we're going to spend it. We'll move. Because that building needs to be open and lit and we need feet on the street and we need a profit-making business within it as a tenant, you know, paying some rent and making that building a living part of the city again. It is not right now. It's great vacuum in the city. But I think, we think we can bring it back to being a real, a sort of a pulsing center where people want to go, you know, and it's lit up at night and it's special, like it used to be.
Lisa, you had a question?
Judy?
Oh, yes.
I know you guys have been working on it. Can you give us an update on all the things you've done in the last few years?
Sure. One of the things that we did was repair some damage that the city did to the building, pardon me. Years ago, one half of the grand staircase on the east half of the building, which takes people up to the Opera House, was butchered and the last six or seven steps were cut away and that space was utilized as a tiny office for the chap, who was the building inspector?
Mr. Stedford.
And some, you know, false walls were put up and all of that. So when we got in there, we tore the false walls down and the two-by-fours and whatnot and we exposed the butchered staircase and we rebuilt it. $32,000, it's steamed oak, it's really rather special. And the specially curved molding and all that was also dedicated on the existing staircase. So now we again have two staircases. That's one thing we did. Another thing we did was interior demo. We removed over 10, 10-yard containers of plasterboard, two-by-fours, and fluorescent lighting, and bad wiring, and itty flooring. Demoed back to the brick and exposed gorgeous brickwork. The next thing we did, and I don't have too many details on that, we replaced a gas line at one point. And I don't know, don't ask me, but we did. Then we committed to doing the fire suppression system. And in order to do that system, we had to put in a new water line. It's called a 4-2 and it comes from Pearl Street South into the building. And that line was like super expensive. I don't remember right this moment.
Thirty, almost $36,000.
Yeah, and then there was the extra charge because it had to go underneath the, there was another $4,000 on this, so whatever. And then we hired a company to install the sprinkler system and that was the 86. That actually cost a little bit more too, because there were some glitches. Sprinkler system goes throughout the building except it does not go into the ground floor of the fire hall. So the piping comes through the wall and stops. It's capped off. So that has to be done. Sprinklers have to go in that section. So there's this one sort of Achilles heel in the building that we have to see to.
There is a sprinkler system in that part of the building.
Say it again?
There is a sprinkler system in that part of the building.
There is in the garage, but in between, there isn't.
Yes, there is. It comes off, the two-inch line that comes in the building, comes in one meter with meters, comes off and you can see the sprinkler heads inside the offices.
Okay.
Trying to disappoint you, just.
All right. He's looked at it and, you know, we'll have to talk about that.
Brickwork.
So let's see, the fire suppression system, now the fire alarm system.
To do a furnace? To do a furnace?
Yes, there's a new HVAC system. That was installed almost two years ago.
And service line, to service line in the building and plumbing.
I can do that.
You're putting a two-inch service line into the building and plumbing.
Just ask this guy what we did.
So you've done a lot of, a lot of work in the last four years?
It's $200,000 approximately that we have done, yeah. And if we had, you know, if we had another $300,000, there'd be no stopping us, you know, we'd go for it. We're all really excited about building. We love the building. And I'm going to tell you a little story. I was looking for photographs on my computer the other day for something else, but I came across a file from 2008. I thought, oh wow. And I opened it up and it was photographs that I had made of the building in 2008. Just went all around the building and took pictures. So I started looking at them, one after the other, and for a part of it was sickening because it was pre-exterior restoration. And I got done, I thought, all of our members need to see this and be reminded of where we were and what it was like. The poor building was in terrible condition. And so Andrew's got a projector and a huge screen and we're going to set that up and show that in our monthly meeting February 19th, just because it's a pick-me-up. I'm going on too long, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Judy, let me, let me stop everybody there for just a minute, since the comments are running longer than the normal two or three minutes. I want to just jump ahead to the approval of the agenda, so we get that off the table and then we'll pick back up in just a minute.
We did, didn't we?
I'm sorry, approval of the minutes for January 20th. We'll just get that out of the way so we can, we can go on, so.
And then Heather can go.
Yes.
And then, and then, yes, Heather, you might as well make your way up there because you're next here.
Okay, make a motion to approve the minutes.
Support.
Last meeting.
Any changes?
No.
Okay, in favor?
Aye.
All right, now let's go back to 300 Broadway, comments. You want to do the meeting schedule now, just so everybody hears it?
I don't know what it is.
I'd think we might want to wait until towards the end, so we know what we have to work with.
Okay. Okay, Heather, please, go right ahead here.
I'm very short here. I'm getting shorter every year.
That's just a tall table, that's all.
Anyway, I'm Heather Bachram and I am secretary of the Historical Society. And I'm here just to support friends with what they're doing. And I just wrote some stuff, I'll just read it as fast as I can, to illustrate the points that I think we, that you need to think about. Old City Hall, as you know, was built in 1884 and it was replaced, to replace the old village hall. It also housed the new judicial center on the first floor. And the uppermost level, as you know, is a beautiful, large auditorium. It was used by the local people and societies for all kinds of events. It was truly the community center and housed many of the typical events of the late 1800s and then into the 1900s. And I took some note here from a letter that was sent to the Historical Society by a citizen who I don't think is alive anymore. Anyway, she talked about the square dances, even some sports events like basketball, musical events that were conducted at that time. And they also planned other special gatherings that were likely to include, and these are the ones she mentioned, theatrical troops, ventriloquists, comedians, preachers, talks by visiting notables. Also, various local groups had a place for sharing and teaching. This included sewing and crafts, singing and dancing lessons, as well as a place for indoor sports and church groups. Societies held fundraisers to support local entities such as the hospital and schools. Not only was the interior of the building used, but also the grounds for fates and carnivals and art exhibits and of course, great use of the old bandstand. Old City Hall at 300 Broadway was truly the center of activity for the community. Now, we're in the 21st century and we have this very nice, modestly sized new city hall. It holds the city offices and has a room designated specifically for the city commission to hold meetings and other groups, I presume DPW could come and use this for meetings if they wanted to, and meetings like this. Anyway, however, the idea that it could be a real community center in all respects is obviously not very realistic. The good thing is that Friends of City Hall have been able to forge ahead with the restoration of Old City Hall and have achieved amazing progress for the time that they've been doing it. It's been a daunting task, but the exterior being already restored, they've tackled the interior and as Judy said, they've already got the heating and new cooling systems up and running, fire suppression systems are in place, and the original front double stairway restored. Windows have been replaced and then many other things that they have done that have already been spoken about tonight. So Friends of City Hall are to be commended for their work, their perseverance even through the current pandemic. The Historical Society of Marine City first became involved with Old City Hall in 1998. And we believe that the city should accept the offer by Friends to purchase the building. And the society also adds the caveat, it is in the interest of everyone to recognize that Old City Hall will once again be the community center for Marine City. It is the logical place for it when considering all the events that can be, that can happen there. And the various uses of the building will provide the necessary funds to do the maintenance of the building and to cover income for a small managerial staff to promote and organize all the events. This is talking about when it's all functioning. And Marine City would no longer have to cope with finding funds to maintain the building. And that was really an awful problem in the past. And in fact, the maintenance funds usually were used for something else, like, you know, paying a higher salary to different people or whatever, but anyway. And our beloved magnificent Old City Hall can be here for years to come, to be enjoyed and utilized by the community and all the visitors to our town. So this is mostly a support from the Historical Society to Friends. And I don't know that you have any questions for me, but I'd be glad to take any.
Guys, questions for Heather? Thank you, Heather.
Thank you.
Good, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Phil, did you have something?
Yeah, I'll go up there. Oh, I'll go up there.
Well, it's being recorded, I think, so go ahead.
Okay.
Well, Palauchak, 546 Chertier. I just want to voice my support for the Friends of City Hall. I want to thank Historical Society and the Friends of City Hall for their presentations. They were both very informative. And I look at it this way, the building's been vacant for a long time. The Friends of City Hall has jumped in. They have done a tremendous amount of work in that place already. And if they're telling us that if they own it, they can actually apply for bigger grants, bigger money to help. they can actually apply for bigger grants, bigger money, to help restore it, to help get us along the way of getting it back to that usable point, what does the city have to really lose in doing that? I am all for, you know, doing the purchase agreement, turning the building over to the Friends of City Hall, getting the building off the city's back for a while, and then seeing what good things they can do with it. I would love to be able to do events or go to things and be able to see it restored to its former glory. And I also see some kind of connecting points here where, I mean, we've got the issue going on with 303 Water Street right now. And if the Friends of City Hall can do a really, really good job in getting it to where it needs to be, that could become a viable community center for the residents to use. And I'll save my Water Street comments on 303 Water Street for when that comes time. Thank you.
Anybody else on 300 Broadway? Anybody against 300 Broadway? Let's put it that. Everybody's for it. Do we have anybody that would like to speak against it?
It exists. What would we be against it?
Well, I...
I'm sorry.
Good, good point.
The question is essentially what future possible use, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Have there been any other suggestions?
Not in this venue, no. Kim, did you have something else you wanted to add, or?
I pretty much could chime in on everything that's going on.
Okay.
How do you want to stress the point about the park should remain a park?
Okay, I think that's been pretty clear.
Okay.
From our... From the comments last week. Before I continue, do you have anything you want to say for or against 300 Broadway?
No.
Okay. The consensus of the community represented by those in the meetings the last two weeks is that the city make the sale to Friends of City Hall. The nuts and bolts, I think we need to work out. Bill, Lisa, and you two guys are on the city commission. How much of those nuts and bolts do you... Pardon me?
We can answer.
Well, why don't you let me ask it first? I'm going to ask the question anyway. You don't have to answer it. How much of the nuts and bolts do you want this work group to leave for the city commission to work out? You want us to work out all the nuts and bolts? Okay, well, I'm just clarifying because that's where we are at this point.
Well, there's still issues with the property and all that.
Exactly. Exactly. What's your sense? We're down two members. Do you want to start working on nuts and bolts? What do you think we should do, or go to 303 Water Street?
Let's... I think we should continue with public comment on 303 South Water Street. And then we can circle back. And maybe by the end of the meeting, maybe have just a general, this is the direction we want to go, and then maybe work on nuts and bolts at a future meeting.
Okay. Brian, sound good to you?
Sure, I think we could discuss some preliminary nuts and bolts, but, yeah. You know, I mean, I'd like to, you know, at least leave this meeting with, say, a bullet point list of what we feel the general consensus is regarding 300. I mean, we haven't heard much in the way of opposing the sale to Friends, right? I think we need to work out the... Or ask for the legal issues surrounding the park that surrounds it to be worked out. Can that be not sold? Can it remain a city park? Just, you know, ask for perhaps a legal interpretation of that. Kim, as you have brought up before many times, right? It was one of the first parks that the city ever established. The first, actually, I think. Right. So, anyway.
Okay, what other bullet points you're thinking of?
I don't know, perhaps a few sentiments about delving into the contract with Friends of City Hall more, but I don't know that that... I think that's something that we could leave for a later date once we are able to digest and chew on that more. But I do think that those three points, right? Disposition of the park, selling to Friends of City Hall.
And the other question, kind of jumping on that, is if we take the grounds and continue to have the grounds as a park, it's more of the mechanics of how to do it with the master plan. And having, because right now, the master plan just has a one-piece parcel of property. So the park would still have to be called out in the master plan, but the building would have to be presumably separated to sell the building. So I mean, there's... I don't think it's insurmountable, but I think there are some mechanics that need to be worked out.
I agree. One of the other things I'd like to ask about, too, when it was brought up, and I think that the majority of the community would agree that there hasn't been a huge love of the idea that this room was designated the community center. And it was brought up to bring back the opportunity for the public to be able to use 300 Broadway again as that conceptual community center for everyone. So I guess one of my questions would be, would that be a negotiable point with the Friends of City Hall as an option to designate a portion of, put the plaque there, have some sort of agreement that that is kind of the Guy Community Center in a way, too, or a portion of that building to be? If it's going to be a true community center, would that make the most sense to kind of combine those concepts a little bit?
Judy's already agreed to that.
Okay. So that there end, we do have to talk some serious mechanics and legalities of that because technically, a municipality cannot operate on private property. So there would have to be some serious legal rigmarole done in order to make that happen, where the city would still be able to do our due diligence with the Guy Center per our agreement in the last will and testament of the Guy family, while doing so on private property. So again, there'd just be some legal things that we would have to work out, but I'm sure that there would be ways around it considering what the overall goal would be.
The other question is if a portion of the building is designated as the Guy Community Center, does that remove that from Friends of City Hall being able to charge for the use of it in order to further their goals of restoring the building? I don't know.
Utility bills. I mean, there'd be a lot of things to work out there, yes.
I'd like to speak to that if I could.
Yeah.
You have a copy of a proposal that I have made regarding the community center being integrated into City Hall. And my thought was that the entire building become accessible to the community center and that community center activities be worked into and around certain calendar activities. You know, if you had a performance center and if you had a rental center, even if those were going full steam, there's plenty of downtime. Lots of downtime, which the community center can take over. And certainly, just say Mondays, Tuesdays, and Wednesdays, nothing's going to happen with the performance center, you know, on those days. So my thought was the whole building becomes accessible. And it's, perhaps the legal loophole would be that for the duration of the purchase, the community center leases, becomes a tenant of Friends of City Hall. And it could be a dollar a year, you know?
Yeah, well, the other...
We'd either get Robert involved in...
Yeah.
Yes.
Most definitely.
The other question would be then you would have to segregate, if you will, what activities could the community center be used for versus what, you know, a performance, per se? So someone...
Community centers are very, quite variable in what they do. And our thought was that the community center in being reestablished, because remember, it's been moribund for many, many years. So in reviving it, it should start on a small scale. Just a couple of things. Do them well, make them successful, add a little here, add a little there slowly, and build it back up. Let me just bring up a new sample of what a community center can do. Recently, the elderly housing in Elgin had burned to the ground. And all those people lost all their possessions. Thank God, no loss of life. There was no community center to set up in response to this emergency. The Lions Club became a community center. And people brought the cash, the food, the clothing, the furniture there, and also to the Lions Club here in Marine City. A community center functions in emergencies. You know, it's a place to gather, it's a place to serve, it's a place to help.
My only concern would be someone wants to rent the opera house for a wedding, a dance, an event. And they say, okay, well, it's a community center, so why should I pay? That is what I would want to... And again, I think we can figure out how to do it, but I wouldn't want someone to say, well, it's already the community center. I shouldn't have to pay to rent it. Which would, you know, if someone's starting to say that, now that impacts your ability to maintain and further your restoration efforts. So I just want to make sure that it doesn't impact your financial ability to continue the building, to continue the progress that you've made so far.
Jim, question, statement?
Yeah, relative to what you just said, this room is the Guy Center right now because you put plaque outside. Although you don't call it that on your notice and stuff. It's known to the public as the Guy Center. So next week, I want to schedule a Yuka tournament in here. Can I do it? Who's got your schedule today?
Technically, that's part of the problem.
That door will be open, right?
That's part of the problem.
It's going to lock me out.
We're not set up to be able to facilitate it. We don't have somebody to come in here and clean up after. We don't have the ability to lock out from the rest of the office. So I would argue that that was not a well-thought-out process. And as the person who's got to handle that now, no, I can't. I'm not in position.
So now that group who owns City Hall decides to let that happen, let them manage it. Why would you have to manage it? Schedule it.
Why would we have to manage it?
At the beginning, you said because it's a community thing and a private ownership.
Because the designation of the Guy Community Center was something that was gifted to the city to maintain and handle. And with that comes there end, an entire legal agreement that has been done up. Not only do we have the obligation to have the plaque on something and maintain that in perpetuity, we are also supposed to use the finances that were left to us in a specific restricted fund to maintain whatever that property is. So...
So pull up that plaque, move it to City Hall, take those funds and put them in City Hall. It's not going to be popular.
There's... They're all, I mean, I don't think that there's, I don't, I think that there's ways to do it. I really do, by, if there was a combination at...
But this is a community center. Next week, I want to have a Yuka tournament here. Can I do it?
No.
Why not? It's my center.
I don't, that's my point. And that is part of why I've been arguing as well. And I've been saying, a lot of this has a domino effect. The sale of these buildings or the repurposing of these buildings or the whatever we do with these buildings, there is a domino effect of what's going to happen. But the way that it was discussed and handled before I was here, I don't know what those conversations were. All I know is that there was an intent to have this be the Guy Center. And it was a poorly laid-out plan because I cannot facilitate that here. Like I said, I don't have somebody to come in and let a group in at 7:00 at night. I have to pay a staff member to come in, turn off all of the security, stand at the door so nobody can get to the main office where our records and our money and everything else is. I have nobody here to clean it up. I have nobody to come in and clean the bathrooms. So that plan originally was terrible. I don't know who made it. And I can't facilitate it. Technically, right now, I think unfortunately, we really don't. I mean, we could facilitate this as a warming center. In a case of emergency, we would figure something out. But as far as a group wanting to come in and play cards, Jim, this doesn't work.
Take the sign now.
Jim, I have a question. You said, you know, you guys, you said you don't know whose idea it was to put that plaque out there? Doesn't it, this is the Guy Center? Or along those lines? Does anyone know exactly whose idea was that? Who said, "We're going to move the plaque, and we're going to put it here, and this is going to be the new center"?
I'd like to...
The mayor's coming. A former city manager instructed me to put the plaque over here.
Okay, so it was the former city manager?
There was no discussion by the commissioner, unless however. It was never brought to a... I installed the plaque here, and we moved it from the building and put it there.
Thank you. That supports my argument. It could be anywhere. It's today. It's not really here.
Right. But we have an obligation of what we are supposed to be doing. And I think that we need to do what's right. We need to do what the original agreement was with the Guy, the Guy family's living well and the obligation that the city was bound to when they agreed to accept the funding in the first place. So if we're going to do the right thing, we need to do the right thing all the way around. And wherever the chips fall in the dominos of how these properties shake out and who owns them, somewhere along this path, we have to figure out where's the right place for the true plaque to go and the community center to be and the maintenance of it properly. So I just want that to fit in somewhere.
I...
And I just say one thing to answer Commissioner's last question about somebody wanted to just come in and have a wedding. You have to, I mean, first of all, it's going to be owned by a nonprofit organization. It's a little different than, you know, somebody coming in and putting a business in there. But... Where was I going?
You didn't remember to... Oh, the Florida Community Center used it.
Yeah. You know, anything, anybody knows that if you are going to use a community center for any kind of an event, it cannot just be impromptu. You have to, you know, have a schedule that can be followed. You have to have a time slot. And then there will be some fees because you're going to have just real work to do before and after an event. You have to, you're not trying to make a fortune on all these events, but there should be small fees.
Hang on, Judy. Listen, you had a...
Well, I guess part of it was, I think Elaine's thought was on this room, which probably isn't big enough, was that this was supposed to be locked. And then, you know, it was used as a community center. You had the bathrooms, and then we have a cleaning crew that probably would have to handle it. We'd have to probably do, just like the Lions Club, we do a deposit. And if they keep it clean, they give the deposit back. If they don't, we take it out of their deposit. But I think part of it is, I think you better be very, very careful on just this little idea of selling the Guy Center and taking all that money and throwing it into 300 Broadway. Now, I'm not against them taking over it. I think it's a great idea. They've done a lot of work to it. But just shifting that money is going to be a real hard spot in this community. I can tell you that right now on the feelings of the people. So it's going to have to be dealt with very, very carefully.
Judy, did you have anything, or?
Well, I just wanted to say regarding Ben's observation, well, somebody wanted to read it and said, hey, but it's a community center. What I'm finding, what I have found over the years of renting spaces for our fundraising dinners is you don't really pay for the space. What you buy is a place. You pay per plate, you know, per head. That's what you're, you know, that's what you're laying the money out for. You're going to have to do that no matter what. And therein lies the profit for the institution behind it.
And therein lies the profit for the institution behind it. Down at the Lions in Elgin, the price per plate is pretty small. They don't worry about it. They charge nothing for the space itself. They make their money off the bar.
Bill, did you have a hand up?
I have a question. She was talking about furnace. And that furnace, is that capable of doing all three floors?
Um, I am.
Is the furnace that you put in capable of all three floors? Or are you sectioning them off?
To the best of my knowledge it is, but it is not currently, what is the bird?
Functional for the other side.
Connected, yeah.
We don't have all the piping or whatever.
Duck work.
The U.S. Center has their own, right?
Yeah, um, the furnace that they put in will cover the entire area. Just right now it's only on the first floor. And then they will put it up the second floor once they start.
With the medical line of building, the firemen for the PTUs and stuff.
Yeah.
It has a certain temperature, that's the Elginian buildings.
I believe that's already the done though.
Well, I'm just asking. Right now it's not. It's not finished yet.
Right. I, I didn't follow that. Is he okay?
I think so.
You said the furnace can handle the whole building? It's just not.
Yeah.
Yeah, the issue is to walk into that building now and it's more.
Judy, can I?
We don't, we don't, we keep it moving.
She's hard of hearing.
I, I think the next step for 300 Broadway is to find, to get a legal opinion on, before we even.
Several issues.
Go even further, go, sorry, my brain's fried today. We go, we, before we go further down the rabbit hole of should it be the Guy Community Center or not, is, is, is it even permissible? How would we do it if we wanted to? Before, it may be a moot point, so.
Right.
I, I think we need a legal opinion on that before we go beyond that. But, I mean, I think, you know, I agree with you. I think the sense is to certainly, you know, move forward with Friends of City Hall and.
Work out the nuts and bolts.
Work out some type of deal to help them make this, you know, continue their efforts.
I would simply observe that, um, the whole community center thing is impossible until the building is, uh.
Yes.
Very free.
Yes.
So there's time.
Yes.
There's time. That decision, those problems do not have to be solved today. However, if we hit the lottery.
Okay. All right, Judy, not to cut you off, but in the time we have left, I'd like to go, move on to 303 Water Street. And again, if you have comments, pro or con, um, if, if we can keep them as short as possible, let's do that. Anybody? Jim?
Right now, what is the city's plan for the building?
That's why we're here.
So right now, the city is sitting on it. It's, we're heating it, we're making sure it doesn't burn down every day, we check it. It's sitting there. It's been cleaned out. There, there is no intent for that building right now. That is exactly why we are here. There is no formulated plan that, we are here to, to listen and see what you want.
The only thing we're hearing is talking to realtors, we've come up with a value.
Well, the, we did want to do that because we wanted to say, hey, this is the, you have an asset, what is it worth? That is merely what that conversation has been about. And as the, those realtors have contacted me back to say, what is the status? I said, we're in work group mode. We, there have been no decisions made. They, they know the value of their asset, they're deciding what direction they want to go. Thank you, if we need you, we'll reach back out.
Okay. One more question.
Sure.
Do we have an idea of what it would cost to restore the building to reusable?
We've put some rough, Mike did some rough numbers on it.
Bring it up to code.
Yep.
It's a lot.
Bring that up to code. Back in 2018, I had contractors in there do double doors, push opening, high lift, staircase off back, the whole thing to make ADA compliant. Back then, I believe it was two, what were those rooms, like, two seventy?
Uh, got a figure here, two twenty-five.
Two twenty-five.
Two hundred and twenty-five thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars.
This is everything.
This is everything. But now, today's prices, you're probably adding a hundred fifty, a hundred seventy-five thousand dollars out of that.
And that we would have to do before we could lease it.
Right.
Do anything.
And then you also have the problem with the fat power panel, which services the lighthouse, civic weapons power, um, the cameras downtown, you know, that's, all have to be separated from that building also.
Okay.
And at that time, the price was eighteen thousand dollars to separate that.
So my ballpark figure, to, to be able to bring that to code and lease it out, if you decided to do it or whatever, what number are we talking?
I'm, I'm, I would give that to the three hundred thousand.
Okay.
You know, that would be my estimate.
Okay. Mike, you had your hand up?
And what does that include, like, three hundred K, what is, is that a furnace roof or is that just like ADA stuff?
ADA stuff and first floor, um, access to the building, it's hanging off the back, same as the heads.
Three hundred K and just.
Yeah.
That seems accessible.
And that is simply to be able to put it up for lease?
If we wanted to actually lease it out.
Do we know a lease value if it's restored? Because frankly, if I owned a business and I had some bucks, I, I would be very interested in renting that place because it's so gorgeous and it's just so wonderful and romantic.
My concern with the concept of leasing this building, um, I mean, I'm, I'm just going to be brutally honest on this one. The cost upfront for the city to rehab that building, to get it into lease mode, before we ever recouped a dime on it, is something we don't have. It's too much money to do. I, I honestly believe that. I think if our efforts are, are being focused on saving and preserving one of the historic buildings, I think looking at making sure Friends of City Hall has a 300 Broadway is a much more significant piece of the history here in this community than 303 Water is. And, I mean, if, if the, the concept was, let's sell it to somebody else and have them rehab it, go for it. But I, the city does not have the kind of money to sink into that before we could find, you know, recoup a, a dime of leasing it. I just.
Is there enough time where you could go for grants to cover some of those restoration expenses?
Grants take time and grants are no guarantee, like you know. So you, you could spend years trying to go after the money to do it while it sits there and becomes more dilapidated and we could have done something else with it. I, when I look at 303, I see, I see option of, you know, sell it to somebody who can do something with it. I, the option of tear it down and, you know, make the park bigger. Those concepts seem to make a little bit more sense than having the city sink more money into that building.
In the back?
What are the obstacles to selling it? What are the arguments against selling it?
Other than the cost to remove the electrical connection and stuff.
Twenty grand.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was back in eighteen, so we had.
Oh, okay.
A little more.
Forty-five grand.
But now, remember, they're already getting, we're going to have a lifetime of use of it on both sides of that building. Okay, and in the past, they would get, uh, lives twenty-five and thirty feet up to the end, so we still have a walkway along.
Park is maintained, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Even, even if we tore it down, it would be more expensive, what was it, about sixty thousand dollars to tear it down?
It was, I had just been done on it and it was fifty thousand to take it down.
Plus the eighteen to twenty-five to do the disconnects.
Well, that would, you know, again, you did the same thing we did the other parks. You would have a panel sitting there.
Yeah, you just leave it.
Along with, along with extra plugs in it, with, you know, surrounded by submarines, submarines like we have in the knuckle, civic weapons, well, not civic, but street park and Broadway park.
Okay.
And, you know, and you could even put up a really nice pavilion in the place and dedicate it to.
Whomever.
You know, whoever.
One, one of the concepts I, when we do talk about the park though, I, I'm always going to bring you back to the money for a second here because remember that the city used the Guy family contribution or donation to purchase that building for the city. So if you knock that building down and you spend the money to have it demoed and do whatever else you need to do with it, the city's still going to have to reach into its pocket someplace and come up with the money to put into the restricted fund designated by the Guy family. So the concept of selling it does have the appeal in that we could pull out the money that was, that we needed for that to put in the restricted fund and the city wouldn't have to find it someplace else. So remember, the money's going to roll with this one somehow because we have to fill the fund that we are obligated to, to backfill.
What is that dollar amount?
That, that is.
They gave it to the city or is it inside current value?
So that's part of what I've had conversations with the attorney about. I do believe that the, there will be an increase in value. So I believe it was forty-two or forty-six thousand dollars was about the estimate between the sale of the two properties. So, but because the investment grew by having a riverfront property, if you were to sell it, I do believe that a portion of that would increase the value. I don't know what that would be. We would have to sit down and figure it out with the attorney based on interest over the years and what would be a fair number that they would determine based on, on the last will and testament. But I do believe it would be more than the forty-two that they left us. Yes.
Okay. Anyone else? Lisa?
My suggestion also would be please contact George Jacob who did the original deal on that with the family. He has all the records. He's provided a lot of the records. He can tell you everything that's had, he can tell you what has to be done with the money and how that all works. He still has all that information available. I've tried to get our attorney to talk to him, but I don't believe he has.
I think we have it.
Well, there's.
I've, I've been reading pages.
The issues because he knows the details from the original deal.
Okay.
George Jacob.
George Jacob.
Jim, do I have any questions?
George has got it all on, because I talked to him, he's got it all on scan. But he can also tell you about it because he was there when the deal was done.
Comments? Yeah.
Have you guys got any explanation as far as why the bids from the various real estate companies are so, such huge range from two hundred K to seven hundred K? As far as value?
Yeah, talk to a realtor.
Only they, only they would know.
When I met with them, it's, I mean, it's just that. They were based out of Combe County, Oakland County, um, I think one was St. Clair County. But basically, the way they work commercial properties is, it is what is the buyer willing to pay? So they came in and looked at what they had to work with, the type of buyers and sellers that they work with and what they think some of their clients would be willing to spend on it. But they said, it's a number that you put on a piece of paper. If somebody comes in and wants it for a million dollars that bad, they're going to offer you a million dollars. Somebody walks in and says, ain't nothing worth more than two hundred thousand, then that's all it's worth to that individual, like any real estate deal. So it's just, they, yeah.
Extremely hard to, to validate options of what we actually want to do when these numbers are so wide. Like, how can we really decide what the right path is when they're telling us, I don't know, it's seven hundred K, that's a huge, you have a high range of numbers.
It is, but it's the best we can do. I mean, we went to, yeah, we went to commercial real estate agents to give us their official opinion and that's, I mean, that's what they came back with. I mean, if that's, we cross that bridge if we need to, if that's the option, I think we go with for, you know.
I mean, what's your opinion? What do you, what do you guys think in this word?
Wendy gave you the taxable value of one hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay, so our assessor gave us the, the taxable value of a hundred and fifty thousand based on the property. But what would we want to list it as? I'm not a real estate agent, I don't know.
Taxable value is usually half a value, right? So it'd be about three hundred, you know?
Good, yes.
What are the restrictions if somebody buys it and decides to tear it down? What can they rebuild in its place? Because you see a lot of that happening.
That comes down to our, our zoning ordinances and how the, how the nautical mile is zoned, what ordinances are currently in place, and that's why those are there. So somebody couldn't come in and put a Walgreens down there, our ordinances would never allow it.
Okay, I'm kind of curious because, I mean, our ferry is turning into a beach of some sort.
Let's not go there.
I want to see the water feature.
Well, that's, that's the point. I mean, somebody's treasures, maybe somebody else's trash type of deal.
Right.
If, you know, if they revamp the building that's there, that's one thing. But if they tear it down and put something else in, what control does the city have to make sure it doesn't turn into, I don't know, the most horrible B and B?
Your zoning ordinances.
It, it's truly just, it's the zoning ordinances are the only control the city would have.
Actually, nothing. We've already seen that with a couple other buildings that disappeared and then got rebuilt. There was no control.
Yeah.
One of the issues, my concern would be somebody would buy it and just let it sit. We have a few buildings that are doing that.
Yeah, well, we're, we're working on that issue right now. So at, at this point, you know, if we, if we decide to sell it.
Yeah.
Um, and, and decide that that's the most advantageous thing to do with that building, once it's sold, you know?
And, and also, refresh my memory, it's, what is it zoned as right now?
Ah.
Um, is it zoned as a government building or is it zoned as C commercial?
I think it's all, I think it's all commercial along there.
I think it's all commercial.
Yeah.
Or mixed use commercial.
So, so it could never become a apartment building per se right now?
Well, first of all, the footprint isn't that large anyway.
Yeah, but it could never become a, even a small apartment building or townhouses unless they tried to rezone it, which obviously is its own headaches.
And they'd have to go to the planning commission with a site plan, go through the approval process, through the building official to make sure that all of our, our ordinances were met before they could do whatever they were doing.
So, I'm sorry I missed your first meeting last month, but have there been other ideas suggested if the city keeps ownership of it, other uses it's, how would you suggest?
I don't think we've focused much on the city keeping it simply because of the cost. Um, I think the focus has either gone more towards demo to create a larger park or sale to an outside entity.
Remember that once the use of that building changed, in order to use it for something else, it has to be ADA compliant and it has to be brought up to code. And, and there's some nuts and bolts in there that, that, you know, so it would be a huge expense just to keep it.
When did it officially change?
When they moved out. When the city moved out.
But in sixteen years, the city took it over, it didn't, it didn't change?
No.
In order to reoccupy it.
I know, but you're talking about rezoning and changing. The city basically took it over for sixteen years and didn't maintain it.
Didn't make it ADA compliant.
Didn't make the ADA compliant.
Right.
But all of a sudden, now all this has to happen. I'm just confused.
I.
Two wrongs don't make right.
Yeah, I, I can't help you there, Jim. I don't understand a lot of it either.
Right.
Going, going back to what happened to the original old city hall, so.
It's the same.
Who was it? Bill?
Yeah.
If I'm not wrong, this, this, this committee was formed to make recommendations to the city council.
Correct.
So this, this has to go to the city council, but they're looking for this committee to show us what, what is feasible.
Yeah, we're not, you know, we're not going to make the determination. We just want to give them the best information we have moving forward as to.
So, certain fellows, if you what he just said, uh, he said there's only been two, two things recommended, tear it down or sell.
Basically.
Those are really all we had heard and that's based on the, you know.
There was lease it too, but we, you know, kind of.
Right, yeah, we kind of mixed it a little bit with the expenses.
The last meeting that had some ideas on how it could be used, from what I remember, we just didn't tape it.
I, I don't, I don't remember what the, any of the other options were for that. It was lease it, sell it, demo it.
Somebody made the option of, of making it a historical district. That was Judy, uh, but that's the only other thing I can.
Somebody else wanted to make it a restaurant. Somebody else wanted to make it a restaurant, somebody else wanted to...
Well, but that would...
303 Water Street is in the same position of City Hall prior to what's leasing, um, the building.
But in order to make it a restaurant, we'd have to sell it.
Yeah, to sell it.
Right.
So that...
But, but there was a couple of people that wanted a few ideas and...
Yeah, I think those are the, for our part.
And their community center, that was another thing that I've heard from people.
Yeah. Sir?
Just to summarize, for the city to own it and lease it, we're looking at about three hundred grand in expenses prior to even finding anybody to lease it.
Correct.
To tear it down, we're twenty-five grand playing with electric.
No, no, no. It was sixty just to raise it.
So we're eighty-five, ninety grand to tear it down and make it part of a park, and there's no income stream back from that.
Correct.
Then the other one is sell it, which is still going to cost us eighteen, twenty grand to deal with the electric. Okay, that's, is that by characterizing the situation?
Yes.
Those are the three choices.
Those are basically the three choices.
It doesn't matter who leases it for what, the city's still out three hundred grand to get it ready to happen.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I'll see there. I don't have it.
Yeah, okay.
Andrew?
Yeah.
Um, you said to tear it down, we'd have to come up with the Guy Center money too as well, so it actually...
Exactly.
Right. Right.
Exactly.
The, I did do some looking into grant options for demoing because it is waterfront and I know that there's a lot of initiatives in Michigan right now, um, with the recreational use and waterfront, um, restorations, that there is some, um, grant money options for the demoing, um, which could help offset the cost for us. I mean, again, like any grant, it's not a guarantee, but the city has done it and been successful in the past, um, and there are even newer options to help with that route as well, if that...
Is it really considered waterfront or water view?
That's waterfront, I, I mean, yeah.
Because the city owns in front of it.
Right.
Well, on, on the water side of it is what you're saying, Cheryl, yeah. That would be maintained as a park still.
Right. So there, there would be some arguments, um, to be made for grant money to extend the waterfront parks, but...
Just a little question for Mike. Does the figure that you quoted for demolition of the building include a charge for throwing away the bricks and rubble and all of that?
That's, that's something out there. That's another thing, it's taken out the basement, it's already filled with sand, black dirt on top.
Andrew?
And I was just going to say, is, what would the landscaping cost be to, to turn it into an actual park instead of a dirt plot?
Well, um, it'd be down to black dirt, you put grass seed on it, but you know, the Civic Williams Park right next door, which is a beautiful park, you know, they're going to move in. They're, they're going to move in, they'll move that over and, you know, um, that could be Civic Williams Park there too. You know, they will take very good care of it, so those girls do a lot of good work up there, they can keep those parks beautiful.
Okay, I'd kind of like to wrap this up. We're, we're a little over our allotted time. Anybody else have something urgent they need to contribute? Yes, ma'am?
I just have a curiosity, when do all these decisions get made?
Yes.
Well, is it, is it a commissioners meeting? Is it another work group meeting?
Well, the work, the work group has got to work on it and then it will be turned over to the city commission and it will be up to them to decide.
And so it'll end up on one of their agendas?
Correct.
Okay.
So, I, I know you're all doing this, so are you going to put all the facts, figures, questions, answers, all this stuff together for us?
That's what we've been doing.
Well, not just talking here, I'm talking documented.
Yes.
I mean, this is nice that we're all talking here, but we might not get this for three more months and it'd be nice to see a lot of this documented so that it's all...
You mean as an ongoing?
For the community.
As an ongoing or by the time we get done?
Well, regardless, I mean, I think it would help ongoing as we go to the next meeting.
Can we post this stuff on?
How is it put together?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We can certainly post the information we've got, um...
They're all just working documents, the information that we've collected, yeah, we can post it.
Makes information and...
Yeah.
We got to get out as much as we can so that the community can read it and digest it also and hopefully that'll get them to ask more questions.
The only reasonable way to do that is post it online at this point, because it's, it's volumes. Okay, we, we got to cut this short, Phil, real quick.
If demolition does become the option and the commission makes that decision, you know, to demo the Guy Center, could we have some ideas on the table of, like, what message with the property? Like whether we put maybe a little place gate in for the kids, or you know, if you go to East China Park, they got some of those fitness things that, you know, as you're walking, you can use?
I'm, I'm sure we can.
Just sort of just spruce up the space.
I would recommend putting a, either pavilion up there or something. Lately, the, um, been having trouble with vandalism again. So if you put toys up there or whatever, they're, they're going to get destroyed, just like my kiddo park. You know, we put all that money out there, brought all those games for the kids out there, basically, check for all the, for all the sticks in them there. They go out there, they broke every one of them, stole every basketball, tore apart the, the holder, everything was in.
Sad.
You know, it's sad, so...
To, to make a long story short, once we level it, then we'll take the next step and it certainly will be up to the community to contribute.
I just wanted to make sure the idea was out there.
Yep.
Spruce up.
Jim, last comment.
Jay, um, I, I like the idea and I've heard a lot of people say, why doesn't the city give it back to, to being a community center?
Right.
My question is, does that require it to be brought up to code?
Yes.
Why?
You still have to make it ADA compliant?
Yeah.
Do you? So if you had, if you had not taken it over, let me finish, Mike, if you had not taken it over sixteen years ago, would it be brought up to code if that whole time it was a community?
It's the same thing as old city hall. Once the venue changes, it has to be brought up to code.
But it never changed.
That's because it was a city...
And it's the building.
The venue didn't change, they were still having commissioners there, so the venue didn't change. Okay, so now, if the venue changes, they can't bring it up to code. The same thing as...
Okay. Judy, I'm sorry, we, we got to move on here. I'd like to look at scheduling our next meeting.
Sure, I just wanted to make a couple of comments before we leave. So I think we have down that we need to find out, again, just as a summary of things to investigate, right? From a 300 Broadway perspective, can we keep it a park? And, you know, otherwise, I think every, everything was agreed. From the 303 South Water perspective, having read the will many times, I actually want to know, are we legally okay with raising it? Because it, from my perspective of having read the will, it would kind of delete the guy's legacy, the financial legacy.
The city would still be on the hook for that money. That's, that's the point that Holly made.
That's what it would be.
That's what I talked to Bob about it.
So we pay and we pay again.
Yes.
Okay. So that's, that's kind of the...
The money just kind of moves to the next designation.
Yeah, right. And then, then the next thing would be that if it were sold, percentage of the proceeds, yeah, what, what, again, just repaying the forty-two, et cetera, okay? Those things I think we should get clarified.
Yeah, agreed.
Um, for administrative purposes, Holly wants us to schedule the next two meetings.
Okay.
Can, can we go two weeks again?
If we can, just so the public has an idea.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's fine. I just, missing Commissioners Kreidler and...
Well, the, yeah, they're, they're just going to have to...
Slightly risky, but yeah, I mean, we can do our best, see what they can do. Go for it.
You go with that too?
So that'd be the twenty-third?
You have CED board that night.
Pardon me?
You have CED board that night.
Can we do it the twenty-fourth? Two weeks is the CED board?
Yeah, on the twenty-third.
Okay, well, we can't do it.
But the twenty-fourth is a Thursday. I don't remember.
I'm okay with that. Thursday, twenty-fourth?
The twenty-fourth could work, yeah.
Okay.
And then what would be the one after that?
Two weeks from there.
Two weeks, like March tenth.
And that's a Thursday again?
Is it possible to live off of Thursdays?